What's my stuff?
I'm gonna, Chip, are you, can you hear me alright? So back row, good, alright. Robbie, time to go. Like to go ahead and call the regular meeting of the City of Chattahoochee Hills City Council for July 1st, 2025 to order. Let the record show that all council members are present for tonight's meeting. Like to remind anyone who makes, who wants to make a public comment tonight to fill out one of the white public comment cards. Please hand those to the city attorney after you fill them out. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so those will all just be in general, public comment. If you have a cellphone, please make sure your ringer is turned off. I say that every time, and every time at least one or two phones ring. I will point at you. And if you could, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, God, physical liberty of the free to exercise its power.
Off tempo. First item tonight is approval of the meeting agenda. We're adding an executive session for a legal matter. And I think that's right, nothing else changing. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve the amended meeting agenda?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting agenda stands approved. Next up is approval of the meetings of the regular council meeting of June 3rd, 2025. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve those minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from June 3rd.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion about those? Anything anybody needs changed? If not, all those in favor of adopting them, please say aye.
Aye.
Everybody, so the minutes stand adopted. We have no presentations or proclamations tonight, so we'll go next to staff reports and start with the financial update from the city manager.
Goes, goes, alright, here we go. Evening, Mayor, Council, Staff, Chattahoochee Hills citizens. Glad y'all are here, 1st of July. Before I get into financials, I want to say tomorrow we got a blood drive in here, so I see the rooms pretty crowded. So those of you that want to give blood, come on by. It's not just a good thing to give blood to help others, but actually helps yourself. You know, it helps replenish your red blood cells and such, so. And a couple people have commented about my attire tonight, my suit. Now, I usually wear, you know, stressed out for council meeting because it's respectful, respectful thing to do, but um, it was to remind me, to remind you, to remind myself to thank you. To thank the mayor and council and the staff and the citizens for supporting me. Because last month, I missed the meeting. I was here on Zoom, but I was in a different time zone from my daughter's wedding. And this is a suit that I was wearing to her wedding, so. I thought I would wear it to the council meeting and thank you guys. Now, you know, for the first dance, walking her down the aisle, same suit. I'll keep it on. It won't be like at the reception where the shirt came off. We'll keep it on for tonight. You will appreciate it. So for the financials, more important is why you're here. This is the end of the fiscal year. Yesterday, we had a public hearing in the mayor and council adopted the fiscal year 26 budget, which starts today. We're in a new budget year. New laws started in effect this year. I mean, a lot of new things happened this year. But just for financials, when these were done, it was 97.8% through the fiscal year. And basically, as much, as many revenues we can collect through the year are collected, and as far as many expenditures that came in, including payroll and such, went out, so. We use these financials to help populate the fiscal 26 budget. To let us know what our fund balance is projected to be, to let us know where our hotel motel fund is going to be and those kind of things, so. You will see through the last page, which is the, what I call all funds budget, which is the last spreadsheet, the colorful one. It shows where we are with the fund balance and the revenues that we collected and as well as all our expenditures. So I don't want to go into too much detail other than to say that, you know, we, we ended the year with basically about 107% of the revenues collected. And for general fund revenues, we're looking at about, including capital and such, about 57%. So we've moved, those capital funds are going to be going toward this fiscal year, and you're going to see a lot of capital projects coming up in this fiscal year. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on these financials because, you know, we're going to be in a new budget year now. But if you have any questions about where we're at, I'll be happy to answer those for you here now.
So we're still two months behind on this loss money?
We are, yes, sir. Good, good catch. We are on, we lost, it runs two months behind. And so those revenues, you're going to get a little bit more revenue, and our audit's getting ready to start. I think they're going to come in July 16th, is that right? So auditors will be here, and so these are unaudited, are unaudited numbers in our financial, our fiscal year 26, 2026 budget is, is an, obviously an estimate. So when they come in, they're going to tell us exactly where we are with regard to our fund balance, whether being a general fund or the hotel motel fund or T-Spot fund.
And I had one other question, Robbie.
Yes, sir.
Somebody asked me, could you explain what is the insurance premium tax?
Yeah, that's what we get from the state. Every city gets it, as long as you, you file when you become a city, you incorporate. And that's the, the insurance premiums that come when, when people pay, just insurance in general, it goes to the state, and it's a revenue that goes to each city. So it's, it's something that is funnelled down from the state, so it's not something that comes directly from taxpayers.
Thank you.
Yes.
That is it?
That's it, Robbie. I know you got other reports to come.
Next up is a fire department report from Chief Brett.
Mayor, Council, and citizens, my printed report, copies of it anywhere here on the table, you have copies of it, is there as well. Statistics represented there for the month of June. From our total incidents that we ran to, this is what we're, what our majority of our, our focus is, which is the EMS perspective component. And then, of course, our fire marshal is involved in all, in most development for the city and plan review and inspections. Hopefully, everyone got a chance to see the new water craft out here. I really just save, you know, give all my time to comments on that and say thank you for having the vision and the understanding of our city's responsibility to each other. There's 16 and a half miles of our western boundary that is the Chattahoochee River. So like people traveling through on the roadways, we have an obligation to serve them if they're traveling through on the river. And it was questionable before with a secondhand watercraft that we had that actually did not operate in the last year or so. Now we have this hybrid craft that we feel we can adequately support the city on the river. And, and then the nearby jurisdictions, because we do have incidents, have had incidents in the recent past where we were involved with Coweta County, and then the city of South Fulton also reaches out to us from time to time. So that investment is an important thing. It was, its timing, its coming was, was right following the opening of the new Riverlands Park. I think we'll probably enjoy more guests on the river and hopefully less rescues. That's sort of the insurance policy dynamic that we hope for. Any questions about that or our services? I've dropped a few other things there, but good lordy, we've been busy with respect to bad weather. And everyone knows about that.
Do we have any questions?
Just quick question about the, about the new water craft.
Yes, sir.
Have you, have, have you had any surprises in sort of, or, you know, changes in the way our responsibilities, your responsibilities to the surrounding municipalities who also border the river? Is that going to change much for you, or have you found anything new in that?
I don't think it will change a lot. There is always this, hey, can you all support us while we're doing this thing? That's been the case with Coweta.
Right.
In the case of city of South Fulton, they don't have adequate resources and word, word is out that we do, and we have that training. And so we expect that there will be some calls for us, but they've always called on us. We've just had to regret.
Okay.
So. But we are, we, the, the craft has been on the river a total of three times now in training sessions. And we are more than pleased with it. We have other jurisdictions in the greater Atlanta area that own a similar hybrid craft as this by the same manufacturer. And it had a lot to do with our decision for that, our recommendation to you for that.
Good deal. Thanks, Craig. Next up is a police department report from Chief Degoo.
Good evening, citizens, council. Today, I'm going to take my time to recognize one of my exceptional leaders in my department. One of the most gratifying things that I can do as a chief is recognizing when I have that type of person and entrust greater responsibility on them. So Lieutenant Stein, if you'd stand up for a moment. If you don't know Lieutenant Stein, this is Lieutenant Stein. He's been with us for almost three years. He came from the Fulton County DA's office, and he was our detective. And during that time, he excelled completely as, as an investigator. During his time as an investigator, he helped break up a ring of thefts, which resulted in the recovery of over $200,000 of stolen equipment, which was a huge, huge deal. Last year, I promoted him to lieutenant, and since then, he made sure every officer has completed advanced de-escalation and crisis intervention training. Our average response times has dropped by 18% without the use of overtime. And he does a lot of these with no fair and fair, but with deliberate planning, patient mentoring, and willingness to shoulder the hard conversations that come with leadership. He's molded servant leadership at every turn, stepping in on midnight shift when the staffing was thin, and even was answering emails when he was in Morocco, which I didn't know about until he got back. So it's just goes to show that his type of leadership and what he has done. So because of that, I'd like to invite him up and his beautiful wife, Jennifer, to where I officially promote him to the rank of captain, which will be. Lieutenant Stein will be the city's first police captain, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, give him a second. And, and before we change gears, Jennifer, who absolutely knew that you were emailing from Morocco, I promise you that, and Dale. I mean, you know, these guys spend nights out, they spend, they spend a lot of time out when normal people aren't. And I can't not take an opportunity to thank their wives for standing by them as they do this work. We appreciate you guys, too.
So other than that, it's been a, a typical month for us. We've had a significant rise in, again, with the fraud cases. I've gotten at least 20 phone calls with, the new thing now is that I have been a pre-approved for a loan that, you know, that goes directly to my voicemail and to call them back. Please don't, please don't. So again, I, I can't stress it enough, just, you know, be vigilant, look out for the elderly. They seem to be the, the target group that they go for. So other than that, have any questions for me?
Thanks so much, Ken.
Thank you.
Next up is a Public Works and Parks Department report from Director Wimland.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents of Chattahoochee Hills. Normal operations in Public Works and Parks right now. Grass cutting season is here. We've made a trip through the city. Now we're starting another trip. I had a phone call from someone the other day in parks about the, the glades. We need to be manicured. We don't. So if everybody wants to know, Mayor and Council, we all set several years back how we wanted to maintain the parks. We decided to cut the grass at the parks in the, in the back areas and the glades three times a year. Spring, when it first gets up to a certain size, plus you have the no, no mow May. But the, the Parks Commission recommended a little bit differently because of our area of the milk weeds, so we do that a little different. So we don't manicure the glades. We keep them cut, so we want to, you know, they are pasture, therefore they're, they're natural. We don't make a front yard out of them. Trash Day Saturday, Ms. Ruby, are you going to cover Trash Day?
No, I'm gonna let you do it.
Okay. This Saturday, we had Trash Day. GFL brought in several trucks and roll-offs. They said, I, I don't remember how many staff members they had. That's several staff members. I had four of my staff members. Couple of the council people showed up. City manager showed up. Very successful. A lot of residents say this is a good thing. They thank, just wanted me pass on to the mayor and council. Thank you for, for providing this for the city. The residence is a, is a huge thing. It somewhat, somewhat, in a minor way, helps me. Because if we could get people to stop throwing trash on the side of our roads. If you ever want to, you can give me a call, and I'll be more than glad to take you to my public works yard, show you the tires and the mattresses. And we go through, I remember how many yard, we have a nine-yard trash can that is topped where the, we can't close lid every Tuesday from the trash from our city. That's not including the roll-off that's, I think it's a 13-yard roll-off that we put bulk wood, trash, metals. You might, you name it, it goes in there. We trade that, we trade that out. Little, a little less than a month, every, little bit less than every month, we were sending it, having it traded out. So there's a lot of city, when people call, say there's trash on this road, there's trash. Believe you me, if we didn't pick up the trash that we did see, you would definitely have a valid point. But you understand, once we get through with one road and it lead to another road, it's trash wrapped back on that road. But thank you for what all you've done and supported me. Thank you for my maintenance building. We've, it's been utilized so many times. And you, when I walk in and see the guys on, with the creeper, I brought a couple creepers from home, but they get to, get on, they're just smiling. This is nice. Better than the gravel, and I sure thank you. Any questions for me?
No, Darryl, thank you guys, because every car that drove up on side of car truck, whatever, you guys was on it like Johnny on the money. And they didn't, the driver didn't have to get out the car. I mean, I was pushing him and getting him out, so thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for, for heading that up. I sure do appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, residents, for your support.
Thank you, Darryl. Next up is a community development report from Director Morton.
Sir. Mayor and Council, you have building permit act here in front of you now. Little slower month than usual. No new homes this month. It's, can't remember the last time we said that. Versus two of them a year ago. Only 10 total building permits versus 14 a year ago. These numbers are, are way down from typical inspection, 139 or 194 a year ago. The only other thing I've got really is planning commission meeting coming up a week from Thursday, that's July 10th at 7:00 PM, work session at 6:00. Three things right now for the agenda. Two of them are also on tonight's agenda for first read, the text amendment to the Unify Development Code and the proposed rezoning of the Bucart property. And then we also have a concept plan and preliminary plat approval for some civic space in Serenby, a, a ball field and library behind the school. That's all I've got. We are expecting the traffic study for the Serenby DRI somewhere around the middle of the month. I doubt it'll be before that planning commission meeting, but last I had heard, they were expecting around the middle of the month. So we'll be sure to put that up on the website once it's available. It's all I've got. Anything?
Any questions? Nope. Thanks, Mike. Next up is a community, I'm sorry, an Economic Development Department report from Chris Montesinos. Director Chris Montesinos.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff and residents. I always like to be the bearer of good news. I know Rodney and Lexie hear that. I've got four things I'm going to touch on. One is one that we've been waiting for since the beginning of the year, which was the green light on the reach, on the recreational trails program, real beautiful universal access trail. We got that approved by the Federal Highways Agency. And basically, we have one more step to go through financial training on the 22nd with GDOT, and then we go ahead and bid the project. So that is moving forward. It's a $250,000 grant, and we're really excited about moving that forward finally. Secondly, I've been speaking about KSU project. We've been working for iBacteria, which is water quality monitoring on the Chattahoochee River. Well, we recently supported another grant application through Georgia Tech for the KSU team and their, for their project. And they were awarded an additional $200,000, which will go and extend the project duration in the city for an extra two years. So they will be deploying the technology at Campbellton, New Riverlands, and Cedar Creek in July. Well, this is July, okay, it's sometime this month, and that will run through 2027. So that's an additional resource that the city did not have to front. It's a good savings, good value for taxpayers. That actually brings our total for the department for the last 18 months up to $935,000 in grants and reciprocal funds for the city. It's great, it's a great, great benefit. Lastly, there are a number of ongoing projects. I mentioned regional trails. We get the safe roads and streets for all grant. I mentioned the NSI core, which is iBacterium. The South Fulton Cop Grants of Transportation Plan is ongoing. GDOT wayfinding signs, multimedia and website development for the CVB. And of course, Georgia Economic Place Making and Art Ag Tour. We will be launching on the 10th a citywide photos contest. We're doing that in conjunction with GEPC locally and with the Chattahoochee Hills Country Conservancy. That'll be launched on the 10th of July, and will be submissions we do on September, September the 1st. There are four different categories and also three different levels of, of skill set for photographers, whether you're an amateur or semi-pro or a pro. And there will be a committee that reviews and classifies for second and third place finishers. And the winners will be sponsored at the Fall Festival for the city, so good news.
Cool.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any questions? Nope. Thanks, Chris. Alright. Chip Denton's already making space for a trophy on his shelf somewhere. Next item on the agenda is public comment, which is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council to provide their input and opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone directly to the council, first stating your name and address for the records. You have three minutes for your own personal remarks. Do we have any public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Ray Broadhead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council member. My name is Ray Broadhead. My wife and I bought a property in Serenby in 2017 and moved here permanently in 2020. We were attracted to living in a small town surrounded by acres of natural environment. The city of Chattahoochee Hills is a very young city, incorporated in 2007. What was the vision of its founders? Did it include data centers, shopping malls, two new schools, a golf course, and almost 17,000 homes? How do we measure progress? Dollar signs or quality of life? Does bigger mean better? If the city is presently financially solvent, what is there to gain with all this proposed development? What would this mean for our tax rate? Many people here are retired or on fixed incomes. Will they be able to afford to still live here? And what is the hurry? How, how can we hear from all the people? Can we vote on this in November? Who needs a shopping mall? I don't mind driving 20 to 25 minutes to shop. The drive is tree-lined and with little pieces of highways. There are many people here in the room who have gray hair like me, and they may remember the song Joni Mitchell sang many years ago. They paved paradise and put up a parking. I hope we can avoid that, grow the city in a sensible manner. Thank you for your time.
Next, Leona Broadhead.
Well, I'm a former school teacher, so that will definitely be no problem for me. I'm Leon Broadhead, and I live at 10723 Serenby Lane. And when I Googled Chattahoochee Hills recently, here's what I found. The population of Chattahoochee Hills is approximately 3,537 and has an area of 35,840 acres. The city's located about 25 miles southwest of Atlanta and is known for its rural character and outdoor recreational activities, according to the Chattahoochee Hills website. In another post between 2022 and 2023, the city grew from 3,273 to 3,537, an increase of 8%. According to the DRI dated May 29th, 2025, the project will add 16,828 housing units. Using the standard figure of 3.44 people per housing unit, if this development is approved, it will add about 57,900 people. A population increase would be 1,637%, an astronomical number. Is this what the people want? Are we going to rewrite our rural description and become Alpharetta? Or another northern suburb of Atlanta? Please, let's be thoughtful before we make such a life-altering decision for our city and its residents. Thank you.
Next, next, Mitchell Wolf.
Good evening, Mitchell Wolf, 300 Model Lane. We, the citizens of Chattahoochee Hills, are being played. After years of careful planning and manipulation, the city is about to be sold off to investment bankers who care nothing about true preservation. Don't be fooled by glossy brochures, vague promises, and false narratives. Don't be fooled by glossy brochures, vague promises, and false narratives. Once they get the Boukart Farm property rezoned, the land will be sold again and again until there is little or no connection to today's promises. Let's be clear. Earl Boukart is not going to be developing his farm. Let's also acknowledge that despite assertions that there has been a thorough and comprehensive study, the application and related studies are sloppy, incomplete, and misleading. For example, the application indicates more than 8,000 homes, whereas the DRI tallies just under 17,000. The traffic studies are incomplete and fail to acknowledge the gridlock at each and every intersection. Then there are the taxes, which already have doubled just this year for many small landowners. As with most gentrifications, these taxes will drive out most of our legacy families, the families who formed this city. This project is not a minor adjustment. It is a seismic shift that will forever define the identity, economy, and livability of Chattahoochee Hills for generations. Something of this magnitude demands the full participation of the people it will impact most, us, the citizens. When this city was formed, a referendum was held to enable every citizen to vote for their future. With our future at risk, we should not trust amateurish or inexperienced committees to bamboozle us into a false sense of approval, or as some would say, consensus. I don't say this lightly. We are now at a critical and defining moment. We should have a clear and convincing referendum to have a true representation of our citizens' will, a referendum, a real vote to decide whether our citizens keep their city and ensure true preservation, or we sell out to the insidious developers, the false prophets who promised one thing and gave us another. And if you, the council members, choose not to pursue even this simple step, which has precedent, it raises a fair question. Why not?
Next, Tiffany Towns.
I'm not sure they heard you.
Tiffany Towns.
Tiffany Towns, 346 Lowburg Court. So, I have been pondering this "keep it rural" slogan and trying to decipher what people really mean. What is rural? My family is from rural South Georgia. I was born in Vianna in Dooley County. Vianna is 5.6 square miles. The population is just under 3,000, or a density of about 528 people per square mile inside the city limits. Dooley County has an overall population density of 29 people per square mile. That's rural. Chattahoochee Hill is about 60 square miles with 3,500 people, or about 61 people per square mile. Fulton County has an overall population density of about 2,000 people per square mile. Fulton County is not rural. None of it. This is designated a metropolitan statistical area. But in Chattahoochee Hills, the town had the foresight to protect and conserve land through the city charter and zoning regulation. I thought the focus was on protecting the green spaces. And to that end, any development is required to conserve at least 70% of the land, no matter the zoning designation. However, it is now becoming more clear to me that the "keep it rural" slogan is not about land preservation. It is about zoning. Keep it rural zoned. That is a more accurate statement. Because what folks in that camp seem most concerned about is limiting the number of people. Even if Chattahoochee Hills did increase its population by 10 times to say 35,000 residents, the population density would be at about 580 people per square mile, similar to Vianna, the small town I was born in. Yet, there are folks adamantly opposed to the notion that Chat Hills would grow to that size, even with the green space protected. Chat Hills is surrounded by cities like South Fulton, Douglasville, Fairburn, Palmetto, Union City, who have populations that are larger than ours and that are very demographically different. And that is where I think the issue lies. It is becoming more clear to me that legacy residents don't want their power or presence diluted by an influx of new folks. New folks with different backgrounds and different histories. Folks who see the value in having services and businesses like medical and dental and groceries available to them within our city limits at a two- to three-mile drive. I have said before that I plan to age in place in Chat Hills. And I am going to advocate that this city develops services that I can depend on and access in my old age, and that we build a community that welcomes folks who want to enjoy our beautiful, protected landscape, regardless of their demographic background. So as I continue to say, let's keep it neighborly as we engage in the discussions around the future of Chat Hills and begin the 2025 election season. Thank you.
Next. Next, Lauren Scoville.
Lauren.
Lauren Scoville. Ryan Scoville. Next, Martha Hall.
Good evening, I'm Martha Hall from 7650 Ripoff Road, Chat Hills. You know, I've listened to a lot about what we want in development in Chat Hills. And I think it should go back to that comprehensive plan. I think the comprehensive plan we have may not be the plan that the residents now want. And I understand that it's not set in stone and law. So that's just food for thought. And as far as the Boukart property rezoning, I can't imagine rezoning nearly 8,000 acres of land for a development that may not even come into being in decades. If the first part, the first phase doesn't work, are we just going to keep plodding along on it? Finish it out, no matter what? I don't think that's smart. And then going back to the early development of Chat Hills, yes, we were told to keep it rural. And that's why many of us voted to become Chat Hills. And there's also another little matter about the Boukart property rezoning. I happen to have a family cemetery at the corner of Woodruff Road and Highway 70. You can't see it from the road, but if you walk back in the woods, it's there. And I will bring pictures and explain more about that at the next meeting. I appreciate your consideration of what I said.
Next, Scott Schaefer.
Schaefer, 955 Rivertown Road. While I've always endorsed the "keep it rural" slogan, I've always believed its real meaning implies keep things the same. What I fear most is the massive population increase being proposed by developers to ruin this place. It does sound like isolationism, but we live here. And we are simply trying to keep this place different in line with why we became a city. It's not always about 70/30, it's about the quality of our lives. I want everyone from small landowners, Serenby, and other developments to clearly hear this message. This population increase will hurt us all. It will change us. Developers and those with family in the real estate business will do wonderful. We will be faced with higher traffic, higher city costs, higher property taxes, because with development comes new sales assessments, and those will increase the property tax. These proposed developments are a bait and switch, perceived conservation in exchange for overpopulation. Our base zoning is rural. That's why we moved here. The city has provisions for zoning larger developments, but the city council is not obligated to approve. This is because the existing zoning allows for significant developer profit at the existing one home per 20 acres. The large developers are not satisfied with, and they want more. As an example, the 8,000 acres up for discussion, 420-acre sites at 20K an acre will give you $160 million. That's plenty. So to get more, they tell you the growth is inevitable, our city needs more money. They inappropriately court city council members, and the mayor's pushes for development, while a majority of us are limited to what we could do with our property. They offer a worthless TDR program that takes our property rights. That is a big lie. We are not broke as a city, nor are we obligated to approve these proposed massive developments. For council to approve, they're going against the people's original desire for our city, only to allow developers and those in the Realtor business to make more money. They win, we pay forever with the overpopulation price inheriting all the problems that come with it. Approving this will bring our daily population to 75,000 plus. I ask the council to please do the right thing for the people that live here now. Ruby, I'm talking to you. Spend a little more time focusing on what the people want. Many consider it negligent that the mayor has not updated the comp plan before entertaining this unprecedented massive development. Remember, my house is on 20 acres, and I have a 95% conservation of land. And from what I am told, Serenby does not have near the 70% conservation. I challenge them to state otherwise. The city does not truly monitor this. We have never done anything like this before. Expect my council representative to do the right thing, say no, or allow the people's referendum vote to decide. Thank you.
Next, David McElreith.
My name is David McElreith, been living down here seven decades. And I have, I live at 10420 Rivertown Road, have been there that whole time to see what's happening to this city, which I understood when I agreed to vote for it to become a city. It was Chattahoochee Hill country, not Chattahoochee Hill city. And that, but I'm saying if I wanted to live in the city of South Fulton, I'd move up the street, have a Publix right behind my house. I wouldn't need a car. I don't want a Publix behind my house. I don't want 6,000 people down the street from me trying to get up the road like they did when we had these giant parties down here at the river that everybody seems to forgot about. Because it was three nights, we couldn't even get out of our driveway. And we're living in the country. So I'm saying, these people that are coming down here, I didn't even know Lindsey was coming down here. We really need to know and have some kind of transparency about what's coming. How many people have y'all talked to that are going to develop here? And I know Mr. Boukart's property is not the only one. How many thousands of people are y'all bringing? And we need to have a looksee of what's going on behind the scenes and not a dictatorship to tell us what we're going to do, just like Scott just said. TDRs, I have property that I can't divide up like y'all passed without asking anybody. And I just don't get that. I think we're more doing dollars and cents than common sense. And that's all I got to say about that, other than I am going to run for Mitch's seat on the city council come November. So don't confuse passion for arrogance. Thanks.
Next, Angela Addison.
Good evening. I'll use my teacher's voice as well. I'm Angela Addison, 5451 Two Hills Drive. Um, you already started my time, cool beans. All right, so I know you all missed me at the last council meeting, so I'm back. And I believe since I've moved here to Chattahoochee Hills, I've attended a good portion of city council meetings, and I've really wanted to emphasize the importance of communication and accountability. I believe that effective communication is essential to any organization. And I applaud the developers, DMB, who, without asking the residents of Chattahoochee Hills, created platforms for the residents to hear what they wanted to have happen with Boukart Farms, as well as to share what their plans were. We didn't have to ask them for that. We didn't have to give them a call. We didn't have to tell them how serious we were to the development that was happening. And I appreciate that. And that's one thing that would lead me to wanting to support something of that nature. To back up what my cousin said, and she's not really my cousin, but my mom's from Dooley County too. There is a way to keep things rural, but also to provide the quality of life that people who are not legacy owners want to have. And Tiffany spoke about that, so I'm not going to repeat it. But I will say this to Mr. Lightsey. At the work session, you said that you were looking out for the next generation when the Boukart Farms people stood up. But I don't know if you've noticed, and looking around in this room, I don't think there are too many people in here who are still procreating. So the next generation doesn't live here. The next generation would have to be invited here. They would have to have somewhere to go. They would have to have somewhere to live. And if we continue to say no to every proposal or to stonewall it by saying, I don't understand, I need a professional, I need outside knowledge, you're not going to have a future generation. And whether it's not apparent, we're not going to live forever. So let's do something that is constructive, that aligns with the 70/30 that we've proposed. It's going to be rural, but let there be a future. And to those council members who did not attend any meeting, or the council members who have all of a sudden during the election season decided to have some town hall meetings that they were asked to have months ago, don't get it twisted. Your constituency has a voice, and they're speaking. Are you listening?
Next, Denine Crawford.
Denine Crawford, 5575 Cockermill Road. Okay, I might have to hold the microphone. I'm not going to drop it, I promise. It keeps falling down.
Darryl got it.
Is that better? Thank you. Okay. So a couple of things tonight. A citizen wrote in about the park kiosk and trying to figure out how to get that to work and what, who they needed to contact so they wouldn't get a ticket in the park. Another thing citizens are asking about are the fiber that's running up and down the roads and the workers that are out there. Which company is doing that? So if you guys could talk to me after the meeting, that would be great, if you have any insight. All right, so on to the next task. Death and taxes. There's an old saying that death and taxes are the only certainties in life. After receiving the recent Fulton County tax assessments, most of our small landowners understand this saying all too well. In many cases, for our family farms, for our legacy families, and for those subject to the 20-acre rule, property taxes will double this year. And they will continue to rise each and every year. Little did we know that when our leadership promises boatloads of new tax revenue, that we would be the ones paying the bill. So, who is the culprit driving this increase? Our city will quickly point fingers to the county, but that is not the root cause. The blame can be put squarely on developers and development. Every time a piece of land gets bought, sold, rezoned, the county uses the updated information to formulate the value of all surrounding land. The more monopoly money is exchanged for development, the faster the county can raise property taxes. So in the end, it's development which is raising your neighbor's property taxes. Development, which is championed by our city leadership. Development, in amounts which has never been a part of our city's vision. And development, which will enrich a lucky few at the expense of citizens who bought into a vision, but will experience something quite different. This is the result of a 20-year campaign to portray the city as environmentally enlightened while all along we were being set up for development. Pay attention to leaders who insist that we do, as they say, while they do something quite different. One last thing, getting back to death and taxes. At some point, when your grandmother can no longer afford her property taxes and sadly falls behind, her home will be sold on the courthouse steps for cents. falls behind, her home will be sold on the courthouse steps for cents on the dollar, probably to a developer. So much for the notion that development is good. So much for the city being careful steward of the land. So much for new taxes being a blessing and not a curse. The way we're going, development may be the death of us. Thanks.
Next, Debbie Kelso.
Hello, council. Debbie Kelso, seven eight nine five, Old Rico Road. And I just want to point that while I'm not procreating, I do have a fifteen-year-old and she is next generation. So we do have some kids in here that want to stay in Chat Hill. It was not too long ago I addressed city council to warn of the Eritropolis and what that means to the citizens of Chat Hills, the organization that some in our city support and we citizens pay for. While we hope as voters and citizens, we have full control of our city's vision and future, our leadership is actively involved in marketing a vision that is very different from the vast majority, which is rural heritage. Rather than inherit to the wishes, to the wishes of the citizens to provide for the permanent preservation of a rural landscape and allow for specific types of development concentrated in preferred areas, the city's current comp plan suggests that hamlets can be anywhere and everywhere in the city, and the largest developer advocates for thirty thousand homes. Meanwhile, sales pitches and guided tours in Serenby highlight development objectives of Eritropolis, including connections to Atlanta Beltway, trolleys down Cochrane Mill Road, and MARTA stations. So much for keeping it rural. We now face the onslaught of zoning change requests with smooth-talking investment makers. If we keep this up, we will become the next Buckhead. Lots of people, lots of traffic, and lots of taxes. So here we go again with the Bukart rezoning request and the kick the can down the road Rico Hamlet. Thank you.
Next, I believe it's J C Sanders.
Good evening, council. My name is J C Sanders. I am of procreation age. I live at one zero four zero zero Rivertown Road. I'm a new homeowner. I've lived in the city my whole life, and it has been such a blessing. And I just thank y'all for what y'all are doing. And I just hope that you'll continue to push the rural agenda, not for the sake of, you know, not having like another Kenny store or, you know, something small, but the whole, you know, trying to rezone for hamlets right next to my house off Woodruff Road is a little bit intimidating when I procreate, Lord willing. I hope to have kids that will be able to run around and ride bikes up and down the road safely. And if we have that much civilization coming in, they're not going to be able to do that, you know? And I just want them to have the life that I've had. I've rode four-wheelers all my life on our property and it's just been such a blessing. And so I hope that you'll please consider that, you know, when you do vote. Thank you.
That was the last one, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you all. Well, it's been, okay, unfinished business. We have one unfinished business item twenty-five dash oh three oh, which is council consideration of an on-call services contract for the historic commission. Who, oh, there you are. You moved, sorry. Ron, Ron will talk to us about that.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight I have an on-call services contract for the Historic Preservation Commission. This is to approve the contract for Archeo Spatial Analytics, A S A. They would be providing on-call services for cultural resources management. We did an R F Q, R F Q two thousand five dash one, and it was a total of six total respondents. And this is the one that the H P C has decided they wanted to go with. So they'd be undertaking site documentation, regulatory compliance, reviews, public education, and cultural resources surveys amongst many other activities. And the H P C chair, Allison Duncan, is here tonight as well. If you have any questions for her, as well as the consultants.
Allison, would you like to make a comment? Don't have to, but you're welcome to if you'd like. No, that's fine. Does anybody have any questions for staffer, for Allison? If not, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-five dash oh three oh, which is the on-call services contract for the historic commission?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Heard everybody there. That passes unanimously. Congratulations. And we'll look forward to seeing the results of that. Next up is a first read of a small slate of U D C changes, twenty-five dash oh three one. Mike, you want to talk to us about that? And, and we also have the consultant here. I'll let you guys figure out how you want to do that.
So that's right, we have the consultants here. I guess if you all have questions or need to walk through, want to walk through anything, we'll let them do that. This is an ordinance to make text changes to the Unified Development Code. The changes began in a joint city council planning commission meeting back in, I think it was March of last year, and was presented to council for consideration in the fall of last year. And council considered it not quite ready, had too many questions. So we brought it back forward in work sessions. Some questions came out, some changes were made. In the, in the code, you can see them in the, I'm sorry, in the proposed code. You can see them in the second section behind the memo in blue are the new changes. The, the original proposed changes are in red. And so it's back forward for first read. And we'll go up for a public hearing in the planning commission a week from Thursday, July tenth, and we'll be back on your agenda next month, August fifth, for a public hearing in city council. If you have questions or want to talk about the particulars, we'll bring the, the consultants up and they'll be happy to work with you on it.
Want to say quickly, I appreciate the council's work on this. It's been a lot of conversation. We've gotten it noodled down to a really good final result. And I think you could characterize all of the changes as tightensings. So it's a good, a good result. Anybody have any questions for the consultants, for anybody? No? All right, moving on to the next one, also a first read. First reads are just things being read into the record. We're not taking action on everything, obviously. Twenty-five dash oh three six, which is a first read for the rezoning of the Bukart property.
Has anyone heard about this one? This proposal to rezone seven thousand eight hundred and forty-eight point two five acres from R L to H M M U mixed-use hamlet. It also, I'll just get it out of the way right now, also up for hearing at that next planning commission meeting, July tenth, again, seven P M. for the meeting, six for the work session. And then again, on city council's agenda, August fifth, for a public hearing in front of city council. The property is, as I said, seven thousand eight hundred and forty-eight point two five acres. It's actually seventy separate parcels bounded on the west, where you can see on the, on the map, to the west by the Chattahoochee River, at the north end by Campbellton Fairburn Road, which is Highway ninety-two. And it's generally north of South Fulton Parkway, although there are seven hundred acres of the, the project that lie on the south side of the Parkway. The eastern boundary is sort of, sort of mixed, hard, hard to define. But again, you can, you can see it on the map. On the comprehensive plans, future development map, most of the property is in the preferred agricultural and rural residential area, with a portion within a mile of South Fulton Parkway identified as preferred village area. I say a portion, it's a pretty sizable portion. And then smaller portions up in Campbellton and in the Rico area that are identified on that future development map as historic crossroads neighborhood. The proposal is for a hamlet, which is allowed in any of those, any of those districts, any of those future development map areas. Site has about ten miles of Chattahoochee River frontage. Much of that river frontage is floodplain. Any of the property within two thousand feet of the river is regulated by the state of Georgia Metropolitan River Protection Act, or M R P. And that act restricts the amount of land disturbance and the amount of impervious cover allowed within that two thousand foot area. They have maps of, of soil vulnerabilities rated A through F. It's a complex system, but the A R C, the Atlanta Regional Commission administers it, evaluates those soil vulnerabilities, and determines how much of that land disturbance or development would be allowed to take place. My understanding is that the applicant team has been in contact with the M R P folks at A R C, but there's a formal process that will have to go through before the city issues any land disturbance permits involving any of that two thousand foot wide corridor on, on our side of the river. So that would be a part of the, a part of the process as the development goes down. You can see on the plan, the applicant has broken the property down into four, what they call planning areas. East planning area is to the north, I might have named it north. Central is around the, the big bend in the river, and then west below that, and then south, reaching down toward, toward the Parkway. The plan, I'm sorry, the Development of Regional Impact Study, which was conducted, broke the plan down into nine phases. The first six phases are in that eastern planning area, so that, that, that part to the north where the horse farm is. The seventh phase is the central area. And then the eighth and ninth phases, we don't have all the detail because those will come much, much later, many years down the road. So another D R I study is required before any development can happen in those phases. That's that, again, that whole western and southern area. Everything on the southwest side of the, of the proposed reservoir there. We don't know if the reservoir is actually going to happen, but you see it on the map. All that requires, will require a D R I study before anything can happen there. And also, the concept plan approval being sought from the city only includes those first seven phases up in east planning area and the central planning area. So they'll have to come back to city council for approval of a new concept plan for those southern areas if, again, the, the majority of the map, if, before any, any development happens there. The proposal is for eight thousand three hundred and eighty-four residences. The A R C's D R I report was incorrect. I don't know what they misinterpreted on there. We heard from the applicant in the work session that, that, that has been corrected. I didn't get a new version of the, of the report. I, I saw the error there also, but, so that's a little more than the number of acres they have, so they'll need T D Rs to do the extra units. I count five hundred and thirty-six. They have retained development rights off of the, the reservoir property, which is owned by the reservoir authority. And they also have some other space, other land in the city that they would plan to strip development rights off. So they would, they would intend to apply the development rights off that other property onto the seven thousand eight hundred and forty-eight point two five acres to, to provide for the other, the other units that they plan. The area up in Campbellton along Highway ninety-two, they have shown on the plan something that appears to, of course, it's a loose plan, but appears to conform with what we're looking for in the historic crossroads. There's a, there'd been a study of the historic crossroads, and in that area, buffers aren't required. However, in all hamlets, buffers are required. So some sort of action is going to have to, going to be required at city council in order for them to develop in that area the way that they're showing and the way that the city says the city would want there. I ran through three options with council earlier, but there would be, need to be some sort of action. That wouldn't be happening, development there wouldn't be happening for several years still, so there's time to, to figure out the appropriate approach there if, if, if council wants to approve some sort of change. As I mentioned, they've been through the D R I process. There have been a number of studies on the property that's involved in this rezoning. In two thousand and four, there was a livable centers initiative study titled Chattahoochee Hill Country, A Model Sustainable Village, that was before we became a city, but the citizens, local citizens, put together a plan for an actual village in that area, say area near the Parkway, but, but something much more dense than is being proposed by the, the applicants here. The site is also mentioned in G dot's two thousand and eleven South Fulton Parkway Access Management Study, which the intent of, of the whole study was to limit additional access on the Parkway. But they did define this location as a, a site for a new, a new Parkway exit. You can see that represented on the, on the map. In two thousand and three, the PATH Foundation put together the Chattahoochee Hill Country Regional Greenway Trail Master Plan, showing trails in the area along the river and from Cochrane Mill Park out to the river. More recently, the Riverlands Project includes some of those same trails that's on the property. Finally, the Historic Campbellton Crossroads Framework Plan that I mentioned just a little bit ago, covers that area in, in Campbellton. It was adopted by the city and lays out how the city would like to see the Camp, the Campbellton area, the historic crossroads up there developed. The traffic study is available online and the A R C's regional review finding is available online, the one that has the incorrect number of residences. We will, I'll reach out to them and try to get the corrected one if there is indeed a document that's, that's been corrected. And finally, the, the Greta notice of decision. Those are all available online through the community development page on the website, or if you look at the agenda materials, the last page of the memo, which is the sixth page of the packet on this item, has links to all of those documents. Any questions for me?
You want to give a summary of the work session? I know it's just a first read. Want to tell the people what some of the concerns were? Or you want me to do that? I'll do that. Just, just one thing I wanted to add that was a big conversation some of you guys weren't here for. Is the traffic study, the importance of a traffic study. Some of you are going to hear this again, but it is what it is. This is where we're at right now. The last traffic study we got showed twenty-six road changes. All of them in Chattahoochee Hills for a project that was partially in Palmetto and partially in Hill Country. Since Mr. Bukart has done his traffic study, you've had two more developments come off the table. You had the Rico thing down the street go bye-bye, and you had the village get put on hold or whatever happened with that. But we figured a traffic study based upon that stuff getting done. That stuff's not getting done. So what I've requested is a new traffic study, which probably benefits the Bukart property, but some of that stuff will be off of it. One thing that I, I did have a question in the work session, and it was very, very simple, you know, but during phase, phase three, Hutchinson Ferry, Cochrane Mill area requires a roundabout. My concern is, is that once you stick in this type of population, we can either have people above us tell us what to do, maybe we lose control. I don't know. But what I do know is every road we have is two lanes. That's all it is. And I do know that the citizens aren't willing to give up their property. So my question to the city was, and the answer was, they don't know. But does that mean that at some point, we exercise the right to use intimate domain to take your property? I think that's a traffic study worth looking at myself. And it is what it is. You know, the, the N O D, which is the final say from Greta, it's not negotiable. It's not. That's their rules. You'll do it or you won't do your project. On page fourteen of the N O D, it has a list of all the intersections. You know, just like I said, we, we've learned so much from that. So until I see that, and also some of the points that Mr. Lightsey made about needing a lot of experts in the room. We've gotten some brief stuff. I know Mr. Bukart, we've talked for years. This guy's been a great citizen. He's donated a lot of stuff to this town. He's made his property available for renting, for whatever. You know, the man does a lot of great stuff. But, and that's fine, but the bottom line is, we have to decide if we want to destroy our landscape like that. That's what we have to decide. I mean, the bottom line is too, he's going to be able to do something. But like somebody mentioned, we're not going to be dealing with him until he sells it. All I'm asking for is a gap in the conversation, not to hand over a blank permit. And the conversation I had to take off the table tonight because the conversation did go long, and I wanted to hear what that gentleman brought as far as the ASHTO standards. It was a permitting board. We need that. You know, I
Stick to the subject, please. This one. Do that in your comments. Let's stick to this subject.
Okay. Anyway, guys, but there's just so much that I think, you know, and a lot of people have said, we're, we're a small city, we're, we're a young city. We need to put some professionals in place for building stuff like this or to find out if we even want to do that. You know, so I think this needs so much more conversation. I don't even know how we got ready for a first read. We mentioned it and here we are for a first read. That's all I got.
Bills have anything that they'd like to talk about?
Just point out
Just point out that, you know, the, the concept of hamlets in places in the city that meet the requirements for them predates the city. It was in the Fulton County overlay, it was ratified in our first comp plan update and the two that we've had since then. And to the point that somebody made about doing a comp plan update early, I actually tried to get us to do one a year early last year, and you're not allowed to, because there's a statutory requirement from the state, maybe done every five years, which is why we're on the schedule that we're on. Important to remember a couple of facts about this one, you know, 5,400 acres of permanent preservation come out of this. And again, the idea of hamlets in the city is not a new one. This is how the preservation happens in our city. This one has been particularly laid out, again, according to our rules, with internal boulevards and internal capture of a lot of the traffic, reduce outside impact, buffering, all the things that we have, and it's a big project with a big impact. So we are talking about it thoroughly, and there are questions that came up that we're going to have to get answered, there's no question about that. But that is where we are in the process, and again, somebody makes an application, first read is what happens on a schedule, it's a defined schedule, it's not something we get to pick or choose on. So here we are. Anybody else have anything they want to say? Again, it's just a first read, we'll be talking more about this in depth in future meetings. Next up is 25-037, which is council consideration to approve the T-SPOS and L-MIG capital road improvements. Robbie?
Yes, Mayor Council, this is the time of year we usually try to do some, do an RFP for paving projects. We did RFP for a T-SPOS. T-SPOS, ladies and gentlemen, is a transportation special purpose local ops sales tax. It started back in 2016, it was voted on, and we started collecting money in 2017, and it was voted on again in '21, I think, and in '22, we started collecting money. So we've done a lot of projects throughout the city, a lot of main roads, RICO Road, Hutchison Ferry Road, Cochrane Mill Road, Rivertown Road, Llydys Road. So this, this contract went out, we had seven bidders for this particular RFP, and it was a great turnout, seven bidders, we were pretty impressed, big, big players. But the one that came in with a good number was $1.82 million, and it was Shep, Shep Co., Shep Company. And our engineer went back to his office and reviewed all the documents, reviewed, make sure they had the proper bonds and proper insurance documents, and came back and said, hey, this is the one I want you to recommend to council for this T-SPOS project. And what the mayor mentioned, L-MIG too, that's Local Maintenance Improvement Grant. So what we do is, because it's $1.8 million, we don't have $1.8 million in T-SPOS, we have some, and we will have more by the end of the year, but not enough, but that's why we budgeted capital, we've always talked about that, and we use L-MIG for that as well, because we get Local Maintenance Improvement Grant from GDOT. So this is what's, if council approves this, then I respond back to our engineer to let him know, the contractor know, hey, let's get the notice to proceed and the contract's in place, because it is July 1, and we don't want to then, we don't want them to wait till it starts getting into the winter months. We had a problem with RICO Road and Piedmont Paving and gotten, they had to stall, so a lot of weather delay, so. Anyway, that's this T-SPOS project that we want to proceed with.
All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt 25-037?
I want to make a motion to amend 25-037. I want the scope of work for River Lake Drive to be removed, and those funds be reallocated for additional paving and ADA compliance at City Hall. I think that's something the whole city will benefit from, and things like, my dad's here, he's almost 90, elderly assists, I mean elderly can get around easier if you're in a wheelchair, disabled, have a disabled 23-year-old, it's hard for her to get around some. I was here Wednesday around 3 o'clock, it was 90-plus degrees. There were so many people right around there at Brickworks, I feel like that's a good use of those funds, and so that's, that's the amendment I'm making.
So, we have a motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion about that motion before we go on to discussion on the item?
It's kind of out of left field there, I get it, I get, I get it, but are we, are we prepared?
Scott, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I just, Rodney and I were talking about the, the need, and I just don't know procedurally where we are on this. But, but ADA compliance. I mean, I work in an ADA compliant environment, it's, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just asking procedurally, because Rodney and I were talking about this the other day, and it's a valid cause, ADA compliance.
So, so I guess, Rick, was that appropriate?
The issue here, Rodney, is this is T-SPOS money, correct?
Right.
Which is restricted. It can only be used on projects that were approved by the referendum, and you're wanting to do...
Additional paving for City Hall, like the gravel, the parking lot, the runs, and as appropriate, where this is able to be used legally, of course, I want to stay in that scope, but we need to upgrade City Hall for the ADA compliance.
And what we can do is...
It's important.
Right. L-MIG, I've already talked to them, Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, that's from GDOT, it can't be used on public grounds, and as far as T-SPOS, it's for roadway maintenance, and if this qualifies as not being a roadway, still okay, because we have capital. And it was, this, this T-SPOS project, 1.82 million, is going to come, it's a combination of L-MIG, T-SPOS, and capital. All we got to do is make sure that the funds that use for this parking lot are capital, and I feel that's fine.
Right. That would be okay, we just couldn't use...
Robbie did say, if, sorry, didn't you say, Robbie, that you had already had a conversation with the paving company, because they're getting this much business, they might even work a good deal on the City Hall thing for dirt cheap.
Yeah, I haven't had that conversation yet.
No, that's what you told me.
I had a conversation with the engineer.
Okay, with the engineer?
Engineer, yes. So, and since they'll already be mobilized. So that's the way, you're correct, that's the way to do it. And the question to you guys is, we've already talked to the engineer about doing the front parking lot, and the drive going up to the side, stopping there, council member Pete is saying, well, hold on, maybe we can include this back parking lot and have some handicap parking right by this sidewalk right here, because he's right, get out on gravel with a wheelchair, and that's not going to work out well for you. So, and Brickworks a lot of times uses the back parking lot here, in addition to the front parking lot. So, and so do residents here, we got residents that came to a meeting tonight, probably ran out of parking in the front, haven't been outside to look, but a lot of them I saw them walking up this sidewalk right here, and they might appreciate having that kind of access. And, you know, we can, we can make that happen for you. I can make that happen for you.
Right, and from a legal perspective, as long as the T-SPOS and L-MIG money is not used for that, then that's okay. Could you hear what I said?
You're going to have to get in close to it, too.
Yeah, as long as the T-SPOS and L-MIG money is not used for that, as long as it's just capital improvement, that's, that's not restricted, then that's okay legally.
Well, and the bulk of the money is going to, to the stuff in crossroads, because it's a lot more road, right?
Right.
We just have to be careful to watch what dollars come...
That's why I said as appropriate, hopefully to catch your condition to apply to that amendment, so that's kind of what we have right now.
We've done that in the past when we've, Dana knows, we've run out of T-SPOS, so to speak, where we've used all of it on the RICO paving, but that's okay, because we planned on spending 1.5 million of our 3 million of that last paving project for capital, I mean, we're using capital, but we didn't have to use as much capital, because the delayed project of the weather that caused the delay, we ended up accumulating more T-SPOS, so we didn't use as much capital, which leaves room for capital to do what you're talking about here.
I mean, again, if we get more extra, we can do more later.
So can we reallocate that capital portion of the funds to City Hall, then, and include the back?
Yeah, that contract has not been executed yet, so all we have to do is get with the contractor and say, look, pull this out, put this in. And it, it doesn't, I don't think it requires a change order, because it hasn't been executed yet, you haven't approved it yet, you're about to approve it. So if you already approved it, and you're asking me this question two, three, four months from now, it'd be a change order. But we haven't approved it yet, so we can make that negotiation now.
If we're going to approve it... There's a, there's a motion on the board, and any more discussion about the motion? All those in favor of adopting that motion, because then we'd, we'd act on the changed...
Well, the motion's been, it's been a request to amend the motion, if that, if that amendment gets a second.
We had a second.
You did?
Yeah.
All right, then it can be voted on.
Rodney and Camille. But is that the straight vote, then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so adopting...
That's the straight vote?
We have a...
So you get a first and second, that's it?
No, no, we have to have the vote on.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just listened.
But the, the vote would be then on 25-037 as amended.
As amended.
All right. So all those in favor of that, please say aye.
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 Let me do that here.
Any opposed?
All those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Nay. There you go. All right, so was that, Scott, I'm not sure I heard where you were.
I said...
The first.
She voted aye. All right. That stands approved as amended. Next up is 25-038, which is council consideration to adopt the Fulton County Sewer IGA. Rick, you want to talk to us about that?
Yes, last month, council approved IGA intergovernmental agreement with Fulton County with the sewer. There has to be a change to that in the agreement that was passed last month. It talks about Fulton County acquiring insurance, Fulton County is self-insured, so there's just been that change, that Fulton County will be self-insured to protect the sewer.
Just a small text change to match reality. Does anybody have any questions about that? If not, can I get a motion, can I get a motion, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt 25-038, which is this slight amendment to the IGA agreement?
Motion to adopt 25-038.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor of adopting 25-038, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is 25-039, which is a resolution to support, continuing support for the amicus brief from Milton County about the right-of-way issue, and Rick?
Right, this resolution would authorize the city to join in an amicus brief to support the city of Milton as it appeals to the Supreme Court of Georgia. Here's, a few months ago, Milton applied for what's called certiori, which is permission to, to appeal a decision from the Court of Appeals. The Supreme Court granted that petition about a week ago. If we want to join in the amicus brief, which just means friends of the court, meaning we're supporting Milton in its efforts to overturn the ruling of the Court of Appeals, we need to make that decision tonight, because the deadline falls in July.
All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt 25-039, which is support for the Milton County amicus brief?
Make a motion for 25-039.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Again, this is one of those that's really important, it would be very damaging to almost every municipality if that actually became the new standard. All those in favor of adopting it, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is mayor and council comments, and I believe that I started with Ruby last time, is that right? So Rodney?
Started with me last time.
Oh, all right, Ruby.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I'm glad we did approve for the paving. On July the 16th, we'll be out in the Crawford Road community, giving them information on the paving that's going to be coming, and also we'll do like a back-to-school for them, and hopefully we'll have fire and police out there. And so if you want to come out, if you got courses or something like that, you'll be able to answer those courses. And I think that's it for me. Oh, the 19th, yeah, the 19th, I just want to say thanks for everybody coming out, and thanks to the staff as well.
Thanks, Ruby. Richie?
Yeah, guys, I guess you heard Mr. Michael Reese, he'll be running for my seat, and that's a safe bet. I'll be running for this seat, right here, Tom, I'll be running for your seat if you're running. That's what's going to take place. Everybody just sit here and saw takeaway pavement from, everybody's been waiting for 30 years. Boy, if that ain't political, I tell you. Pathetic. We hear people from Saranby all the time, I talk to these people all the time about their water down there. It's awful. You're going to get a free education at one of my town hall meetings. We've got one scheduled for the 9th, the 18th, and the 26th. The first two will be at 6:30 at the community center, the last one will be at 10 o'clock, that's on a Saturday, that information will get out there to you. Also, I mean, not, not really a lot to say, guys, you, you've actually said it all, is what you've done. What you've done is you have filled up this room for two years solid, is what you've done. You've assembled, you have read your cards, you've done all you can do, and now it's up to you. My rights ain't coming back to me, sitting in this chair. My rights ain't coming back to me with some of these people sitting in their chairs. I'm going to give you a brief education on that number four chair that sits in Saranby, its job is to represent Saranby. I will never blame it for that. It's got another job, it represents people outside of Saranby, because you control 20% of how we live. So I am talking to some people, and I hope a couple of them step up, because that's the type of leadership we need. We need people that understand, regardless of what they think, there is two styles of living in this city, and stomping on our style, isn't it? Now, when you became a city, what you decided was to have three developments, that is it. That is it, and to protect the guts of our city. Right now, you have systematically tore down your zoning to where a 200-acre hamlet is available anywhere. Every piece of land on that map can be developed, just that simple. That's where you're at. You want to know how you got here? It's called stripping down your zoning. It's not thoughtfulness. You got, what, 150 acres in preservation? You know what you're doing, you're chasing it. That's what you're doing. And for all you citizens who moved here after '07, okay? A lot of what you're seeing and you're hearing, you're not familiar with, just because you were not here. And you have a choice, you have a choice to pick up the phone and call somebody, or you have a choice to listen to what other people tell you. Get it twisted, fill out your card, and stand up here and not look so good. Because you know what? We are trying to be neighborly. Everybody knows each other. That is so unnecessary. But we all make choices, that's what we do. And for some people that did ask, it's really none of your business, but I did have surgery, I was down for a few weeks, sorry about that if I didn't get back to you. Anyway, as, as I hear these, all these things go down, what I got told tonight, and I sure hope it's not Mr. Buchart's fault, because I think Mr. Buchart's a stand-up guy, but I got an ARC report which indicated 70,000, 80,000 people versus 40,000, told that was just a mistake on a document that's literally dated four weeks ago. That's a big mistake to be presenting to people, okay? And we have a lot of traffic concerns, we have a lot of concerns, okay? Right now, whoever said it earlier was right. Oh, it was David, David Michael Reese. We need to do an accounting of who has permits, what they're going to be allowed to do, find out when those timelines are. If they can't do it, pull the permit. We're going to have a discussion next month, we'll see how that goes about having a permitting board to put people in place, so that we have another outlet to get information on these permits, where they're at, how long they've had them. But either way, folks, there's really nothing else for me to say, but to thank you. See, I've done my job. You filled this place up for two years. You tell me who ain't listening. You got one shot at your city, that's all you got. Once you overdevelop it, it's gone. And you got one shot in November, that's the deal I'll make with you. I'll fix it, I'll fix it overnight, and you know what? You'll help me. Thanks.
Thank you for letting us know what your plans are, Richie.
You're welcome. You don't like me in the...
We have never had campaigning from this platform up here before, but go on.
Didn't campaign, told the people. How are you, folks?
Campaigning. Okay. One thing I wanted to say is, also, I'm not sure about how, you brought it up, but I'm not sure how Saranby's water is terrible, it's the city of Atlanta water, and I don't know, it's good to know, haven't, I use the water every day, I haven't noticed it in 10 years.
Educate you at the town hall.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And also, thank you, if I'm in your district, I'd be glad to let you know of issues ahead of time, if I see any, hear of any, because I want to work as a team. That's what I would hope that maybe you would do. Thank you, though. Also, I was going to say that you also mentioned every piece of land can be developed on this map, no it can't. 5,493 acres would not be developed if that was approved. I'm not sure how you did your math. But I also wanted to say, we had some folks brought up about property tax increases, and what I'd like to say is, we actually, it was back in, I know some folks might have missed the meeting too, but... And what I'd like to say is, we actually, it was back in, I know some folks might have missed the meeting too, but I think this is really great that we did this, but we opted into House Bill five eighty-one, which is the floating homestead and it limits annual increases in the properties, your properties taxable value to the rate of inflation. So we did opt into that as part of a Fulton County initiative. Our city decided to do that. And we looked at the numbers knowing that, you know, we can't control how our values go up. I know that's another thing. I think some people be thrilled that their houses are worth a little bit more today than when they bought them. But we are trying to mitigate the impact of your property taxes. So, um, I'm, I'm glad about that. I also want to thank, uh, Chief Brett for bringing the, the boat by. I think it's a great asset to the community. And so thank you for that.
Scott?
Um, yeah, I'd like to echo the thanks and also congratulations, uh, to, uh, to all concerned in the, in our, uh, public safety today. Um, just wanted to address a couple of things. Uh, uh, I was a little, I was a little bit surprised to be called out by a fellow educator for the idea of not, on not wanting education. I think to the teamwork that Camille was talking about, I think our teamwork would be enhanced by being further educated and given a more depth of knowledge by the one thing that we all share, which is making the decisions on the future of the city. And as to the future of the city, you know, uh, and, and, and a couple of times I've heard this strange theme come up last, last, uh, last month and this. The idea and, uh, addressed, uh, by the way, very, in a lovely way by, uh, uh, this, I think I caution J.C. Sanders of Procreation Age. Um, as a fellow procreator with a child and, and, uh, hopefully grandchildren coming back, I want to say that, uh, that the idea of pointing to the, the age of our community as if they're doing something wrong by wanting to preserve uh, for their families. Uh, Ms. Kelso last month said, it isn't all about the money. A lot of people are preserving their properties, want to preserve their property and their way of life for their family. And, and no one, go to, go watch Brickworks in action. You want to see a bunch of lovely older people care, caring for both young and old without division, without a, any, uh, I don't know what to call it exactly. What's that prejudice against either one agenda prejudice? They're just doing good work. And this is a bunch of people who, uh, uh, to Rodney's point, could maybe use some ADA compliance and I'm getting there myself. So this, so I think I, I, I hear these criticisms, but I think that, that, the thing we can all agree on is, is there's a fairly unified vision within, in Chattahoochee Hills. I heard people talk about a referendum. The city was made a city by referendum. And that, and the, and the idea of maybe thinking about continuing to make it a city by considering that idea. I don't, I have no idea how that works, but I would imagine that it's possible since that's how we got here. But the, but, uh, and then the other thing I wanted to address in terms of, um, uh, you know, the idea of thinking about services and, and what's here and what's not and so on. The fact is Chattahoochee Hills through, through management of its, of its, uh, zoning and so on. Although there are disagreements about it, it is currently largely rural. And, uh, you can throw whatever statistics you want at that, but relative to everything around it, it's pretty rural. And what you don't do is you don't go to the hardware store to buy a loaf of bread. You don't move to rural and then say, where's all my city services? We all, you know that when you buy your ticket and that's the ride. And so I would, I would ask that we try to maintain some of that vision instead of, instead of, you know, and, and even the developers who are here are talking about how to mitigate, how to preserve rural vision. Let's, let's focus around that. And by the way, let's get more educated with expert outside advice on how to do that. Thanks.
Tonight's been a great night. You guys have learned a lot. Campaign season is about to be in full swing and there will be a lot of grandstanding. But grandstanding from the stage is not appropriate. It's not appropriate to grandstand from the stage. And I want to congratulate Ruby for bringing forth this council member's pledge for Chattahoochee Hills. It is pass due and I'm going to read a few snippets because it's important. I circled it as we were going over this. I will serve with honesty, transparency and civility. Uphold the laws of the city. Adopted zoning ordinances, apply them fairly. You don't, I will work for the good of the whole city, not just the most vocal or the most visible. Uh, open, um, will remain open to learning and you recommended training. Ruby has set the example of training. She's gone to Savannah. She's taken classes more than me and, me and Scott went because we were required to go. And sadly, I have not gone back, but Ruby, thank you for that. That is well needed. And I want to thank Tiffany and Angela's comments, points, well taken. Keep it neighborly. I love it. Being neighborly, we should all do that, even when we disagree. Having different ideas, we are all sitting here right now because someone had a different idea, a different idea of zoning. No other city close has our zoning. That was a very scary maybe to some people, different idea. It took people with an open mind not to look short term. We don't, I don't make decisions based on the short term. It's looking long term. We drove here today and our drive has been basically unchanged in my lifetime. And my dad's on the front row, most of his lifetime. We are six, our zoning has done its job. I will never vote to weaken it, only to strengthen it. I wish we could make zoning changes only approved with unanimous votes. I don't know if Rick would tell us that's legal or not, but I would love for that to happen. So keep it neighborly. Thank you, Ruby. Um, and on a personal note, I always share, share a personal note. June twenty-seventh, my dad and my mom celebrated their sixty-six wedding anniversary. That is a gift to me. It is a gift to me. It's a, it's an example of love and it, because it's an example of commitment. It's commitment to each other. And I'm here saying a commitment, I have a commitment to this city. And I saw that when I came here Wednesday on a night, I'm repeating myself a little, ninety plus degrees. And I'm observing the Brickworks. And there's some people in the audience that I saw there and they were sweating and pushing carts and in and out of trunks and jumping the curb. And they were all happy and they were all smiling and they were giving and serving. You know what? They weren't posting online for attention. They were serving other people for the good, really inconspicuously. They don't ask for a pat on the back or a big chain, a big award. They do it because they want to serve people. That's what I support. That's the kind of people I listen to and that's, I hope the dedication, I see it is in our city. It's ingrained in our city. It's easy to see. I like to see more of it. Um, Chief Brett, thank you for being proactive and protecting us and the public with the boat for the river. I had a question for Chief Degoo because there's a law change today about driver's license, but we've been here too long. I'll talk about that later. Yeah, our zoning has broken the paradigm of traditional sprawl and it was a new idea and I love it. It's protected us well. I love the city. We need to keep it neighborly. We need respect, truth, honesty, not misinformation, not attention craving. And most of all, not division. We are one Chattahoochee Hills. We voted to become a city and I was there. We all voted. We didn't vote to have little segments. It was one city. And you know what? The map was different. The map had three village sites and the politicians beyond our control changed that map. And we struggled financially. We had tax anticipation loans. It was a struggle, but we're here now. And thanks to Tom leading us into the black, we are so much better financially. I love the city. It's one city.
Grandstand?
Hey, Tom, Tom, can I say one thing? On next Tuesday, the tax assessment will be here. They have all their representatives. So any questions you have about taxes at six P M., they will all be here to answer your questions.
In, in I want, no, I was just gonna, the couple of things. One is the, the thing in, in my role here that I take most seriously is the oath that we made to uphold the law of the city. And the law of that city came from public processes over the course of years, starting with becoming a city and then going on through our comp plan updates and all of that. I recognize that there are, and there have always been people passionately opposed to whatever it was, was the common consensus of the time. When we became a city, ten percent of people voted against it. They would have rather been in the city of South Fulton with the warehouses. No, they didn't think that would happen. But I mean, again, there are always people against. And I recognize when we're sitting in a room full of people here, that a third or a half a percent of the city are strongly against a particular thing. But I take my guidance from the processes that we've been through, these huge public processes with hundreds and hundreds of people involved that have always eighty, ninety percent of the time, eighty, ninety percent of the people that put their hands up and said, this zoning that we've got is the best thing around. And again, look at our outcomes compared to anybody else. Look at what this place would look like a hundred years from now, fully built out under our zoning. It will be the best place in the state of Georgia under the zoning that we've got. Won't be the same. We knew that. We knew that from the beginning. But it will be the best place that you have. And everything that we've done over the course of time with that comp plan process has made the zoning tighter, not looser. And again, I'm happy to go through that with anybody anytime they want to. The couple of other things that I actually wanted to say too, um, July fourth's coming up. I was just reading this long article and I think I posted something today actually showing some mangled hands. Uh, be careful, be safe out there on July fourth. It's the holiday that probably has more people get hurt than any other celebratory holiday. Uh, don't put your firecrackers in a bottle. Don't do, don't do the stupid things. Please be safe. And particularly because your kids are around, be safe around your children. And the last thing I want to do is I want to say something to my wife who may be watching. Uh, because once again, I'm at a meeting late on the day of my anniversary. And I think about my life, uh, when I had the machinery business, we had shows in the summer and I missed most of our anniversaries then. In the candle business, the shows are in the summer too, missed most of them then. And now as a retired man doing this, I still manage to miss most of them. And I say that to say, right, it's like when I called out the police officers' wives. You've got people up here giving their time because they believe in the thing. They may see it differently than you. But they give a lot of their time to try to do the best they can for the people that elected them to office. And, and I think it's important that everybody give them the respect for that, that fact. And it just at least honor that and that we honor that amongst each other as well. It's okay to disagree, right? But, but we can all do it respectfully. With that, everybody, please have a wonderful July fourth and be safe. And could I get a motion in a second to move into executive session, please?
That move into the executive session?
Second, uh, all those in favor of moving the executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. We, uh, will be back, but this is the end of the business that we're doing. So won't be offended if people aren't here.